We'll call this meeting of the Council Bluffs School Board to order tonight. Will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Here.
Ms. Kuzire.
Present.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Grove.
Here. Let's rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, as we are proud of our schools and introductions, Dr. Bruckner.
This is a good night for me to do this because we have some very special people here. First of all, let me introduce two special guests who are here tonight to meet you as the Board of Education because they are newly working in roles or new employees. So first of all, Amanda Jenz, come up here. Amanda is going to be an Assistant Principal at Abraham Lincoln High School. And I asked her to just tell you a couple of minutes about herself. I just asked her. And I'm so pleased her principal came because she said, "I'm not going to make you face all those people by yourself." So Amanda, welcome.
Thank you. Hello. I have been with the Council Bluffs District for 10 years now. My first eight years were at AL as a math teacher. And then the previous two years, I've been an instructional coach at AL. And now will be joining the administrative staff there. I'm very passionate about the work that we do in Council Bluffs. I'm very honored to be an employee here and very excited to join the administrative team.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Thank you. We wish you the best.
And for those of you who were at our celebration last night, one of the teachers that I spoke about was this young lady as a teacher who makes a difference for a lot of kids. So we're looking forward to having her on our administrative team. Second person I would like to introduce you to is a new employee as of coming July 1st. And that's Toby Reese. Toby, come here. She's sitting next to Janet Reiners and trying to suck out all the information she can because Toby is going to be our new Chief HR Officer. She's already visited a high school and elementary school and a middle school each for a full day. She's met our administrative team. She's going to come to all of our board member meetings until she takes over. So Toby, tell us a little about yourself.
Thank you all for having me here today. I came to you from Union Pacific where I spent 13 and a half years there doing the same type of work and United Parcel Service before that. So although I have not had the opportunity to teach at the K through 12 level like we have here, I have had the opportunity to teach at the graduate course level. So I know I have great big shoes to fill coming in after Janet, but I hope I can keep on doing the great work that Janet has done for everybody in the district.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
We have a couple of very special awards tonight. These are called Grow CB Awards. And this is the first time ever we have presented these. So I'm going to ask Bob Mont to come join me because the chamber is part of this effort. Bob Mont is the CEO of the Council Bluffs Chamber of Commerce. And we asked him to come tonight because this is kind of representative of some good work that we're doing together. Tonight, we're pleased to have the opportunity to highlight our Grow CB program. Grow stands for Graduation Required in Our Workforce. We're presenting the first ever Grow CB Employer and Employee of the Year Awards. I'm going to ask Bob to help present them. Grow CB brings together our chamber, school district, and business and industry employers. The goal of this initiative is to raise awareness about the importance of regular school attendance, earning good grades, and most importantly, earning a high school diploma. It's a meaningful partnership in which many supportive adults who employ our students work with the school district to foster a cultural earning and learning your way to future success. We know that our jobs for high school students expand learning opportunities and build bridges between the classroom and the business world. Working together as Grow CB partners, businesses and schools can invest in the future of our community by assisting young people in attaining a high school diploma, making the most of their high school experience and becoming more productive employees and involved citizens. Drum roll. Just gave it away. We are recognized our Grow CB Employer. Our Employer of the Year is one of 48 Grow CB Business Partners that support youth and have pledged to support the goals of the program. Menards is a wonderful example of an employer that demonstrates this commitment. Our students often comment that they enjoy working at Menards and feel supported to do well in high school and beyond. Christina Martin is the Human Resources Coordinator for Menards in Council Bluffs. And we've asked her to be with us tonight to accept this inaugural Grow CB Employer of the Year Award.
We must have made it green just to color.
Sure, you have a copy of this one?
No, of the one that he just took. We have a newsletter that I'd like to send out to our corporate office. Thank you very much. It's really an honor to work with the great kids that we have in this community.
We also know that the program's success relies on students who are willing to pledge their dedication to be as successful in the classroom as they are in the workplace. Our Grow CB Employee of the Year is a young man who's a junior at Thomas Jefferson High School. And he's on track to graduate with the class of 2017. He was hired as a result of meeting Menards representatives at the first Grow CB Job Fair held at Thomas Jefferson last fall. Over the past year, he's demonstrated his desire to meet workplace expectations while paying close attention to his responsibilities at school. Ryan Newberry, would you please join us at the podium to accept our inaugural Grow CB Employee of the Year Award?
You're the inaugural member. You've got to do really well.
That's really exciting for us because we want to continue to explore partnerships with our business community. So I'm glad that we had the opportunity tonight. Finally, I get to recognize our Employees of the Month for last month. And sitting right here in the front row, very patiently, I want you to meet Jean Connectney. You all have met Jean, but come up here, Jean, while I talk about you. Jean has been with the Council Bluffs Schools at the Educational Service Center for 15 years. Here's what her nominators said. Jean demonstrates her dedication and skill as part of the Teaching and Learning Department's Support Team every day. However, she's being nominated for Living the Mission Honors because of her willingness to take on extra responsibilities to help ensure a collaborative and fun working environment at ESC. She can be seen pitching in wherever needed, at the front desk, with mail, and by serving on building-level committees. She served as a key leader in the recent ESC Weight Loss Challenge as a member of the Wellness Committee. She sent weigh-in reminders and motivational messages to all participants. She even took the time throughout each Wednesday to conduct the weigh-ins, respecting and encouraging everyone. That's not so bad, Martha! Whether they were making progress or not so much. Jean also played a key role as a member of the Social Committee in the annual March Madness Challenge. She, along with fellow Social Committee members, helped pick teams, get prizes, arrange for the celebration potluck, and keep everyone involved with extra activities throughout the challenge. Jean is a team player, a motivator, and an asset to ESC. She is joined here tonight by several of her coworkers at the Educational Service Unit, as well as her husband, Russ, her daughter, and two granddaughters. Congratulations, Jean. And Jean, as the Living the Mission Honoring, you were receiving a trophy and a $50 gift card to Harrah's, courtesy of our Living the Mission partner, the Community Education Foundation.
Thank you.
Get your face out. And let me tell you about our Licensed Staff Member of the Month, Tracy Bellamy. Tracy, come on down. Tracy Bellamy is a teacher at our Canesville Alternative Learning Center. Here is what her nominators said. Tracy Bellamy spends all of her time thinking about how she can make things better for her students and her school. Tracy's dedication and persistence helped students earn more than 50 credits in her classroom over the course of her first year in the role. The credits were made possible because she believed in the students and was willing to put in the extensive legwork to help. Tracy demonstrates her talent for engaging students in a variety of ways. She created an awesome cooking class. It's great to see the look on the student's face on cooking days as they felt confidence and satisfaction in preparing tasty food that was healthy and not taken out of a box and put in the microwave. When she noticed a struggling garden outside of the school, she shared plans to revitalize the garden and, of course, make sure that the students were at the center of the idea. Students worked to keep the plants thriving so they could be moved to the greenhouse or later transplanted into planters in front of the school. Students were eager to get out and start learning about how to grow their own food. Her generosity has touched so many students. Tracy took it upon herself to go out and purchase a young man a new wardrobe when she noticed he was wearing the same clothes every day. She didn't just buy what was on sale. She'd spent time listening to the young man and learning who he was as a person so when he opened his gift, he could wear the clothes that showed who he was. Tracy never told the young man she is the one who brought him the clothes. She also validates students for their efforts and achievements she provides so they can thrive. She has coworkers cheering for her tonight, including Canesville Principal Jessie Taverty. And she's coming fresh from being one of our district's members of the Nelson Excellence in Education Award. So Tracy, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Community Education Foundation, I have a trophy worth at least $5,000. And a gift card from the community at Foundation and Harrah's for $50. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you for the award. And it's an easy job to do when I have my principal, my staff, and the community that support me. Thank you.
The final thing I want to do is to tell you, board members, that this is Board Member Appreciation Month. We actually like to celebrate you during American Education Month, but in Iowa, we celebrate School Board Recognition Month. So I have for you a certificate. And I also have a gift, a set of gift cards that have pictures that our students have drawn. So you can use these. So thank you so much. I'll just tell you, by officers, in an alphabetical order. Bill Grove, our president, thank you so much. Troy Arthur.
Oh, thank you.
Our Vice President, thank you so much. David Kuzire, thank you so much for your always service to the school district. Scott Hanson. Chris LaFerla. First time we get to give this. Thank you very much for your service to us. Jill Ogres. Your mother would say, "Don't say that." Congratulations.
So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, I guess we're down to approval of our agenda. Is there a motion for such?
I move approval of our agenda.
Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hanson. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now we have approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 12th and the special meeting of April 27th. Is there a motion to approve both those minutes as printed?
I will make that motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Riley. Thank you. Any further discussion, clarifications? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Now we're to the place in our meeting where we have public participation. And I guess they've all left. So it looks like we don't have anybody wishing to address us. So we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Under the category of student achievement, we have a report on the classes of 2010 and 2013 graduate follow-up surveys from LifeTrack presented by our very own Dr. Jason Plort.
Thank you, Mr. Finner. President Grove, Dr. Bruckner, board, thank you for this opportunity to present the results of our follow-up survey for two of our graduate classes, 2010 and 2013. I'm going to share two consistent celebrations that we see in the data, two opportunities for growth that's also seen clearly in the data with some patterns. And finally, five important things that we need to do moving forward, thinking about 2016, and so forth. So when we look at the data, it's interesting that students are very consistent in what they tell us for both years. On the positive side, they tell us that they feel like we are offering, generally speaking, a good education. Most of our students say that. Many say we're doing a good job with that. And some say we're doing an excellent job with that. Also related to that, they're very pleased and they give us feedback, not only in the survey, but we hear it consistently from students when we go into buildings and talk to them, that they appreciate that our district has a wide array of offerings. And I think sometimes many of us have been in the system or our kids have gone to the system. It's good to remind ourselves of that because I think you don't have to look very far in some surrounding districts and you see that our young people have a lot of opportunities. We know that these opportunities cost money. We have to invest in those opportunities. But we've been very consistent with that and students say we appreciate it. We see that recently with our AP Honor. You know, we were able to receive that honor because we had so many offerings. When we think about some of our career and technical courses, some of the rural districts around us, we receive students from those districts. There's some other local districts that send us students consistently. And a lot of people don't know that. But they do come into our district to access some of those courses. So we're doing the right things there. Students also tell us these two things consistently, whether it be this survey or conversations that, again, we have in the buildings. We hear some of these things from our community members. And it's a consistent message. So we know it's two areas we need to work on. And that's, we're told, that we need to do a better job in preparing young people for the workforce. We know that college and career ed has two components. We've been working very, very hard in our district on preparing young people for both, in particular, the college side. But we need to also remember the career side. Typically, the conversation leads to the soft skills or what are now more commonly called the human skills. And Ryan, tonight, that received the award, he's a good example of things that we're doing right. And it's really simple things. It's attendance. It's being consistent. It's persevering in the face of challenge. It's having the problem-solving skills to approach situations without having to be told. So it's very, those skills are very complex, but it's something that we're working on and we need to continue working on. The other thing that we hear very commonly, and this really, you know, Cory and I have been doing walkthroughs recently at the secondary level, kind of some follow-up walkthroughs to end our year. And I would say, without even looking at this data, if you would have asked us, what's something you're hearing from students? Consistently, they tell us, they might not use the word "real world," but they want to know how a lesson or a unit applies to them. Many of us, when we went to school, you know, we would ask why, right? Which is a legitimate question. But oftentimes, we were satisfied with because it's on the test or because you need it for college. Or if it was your parent, they might say because the teacher said so or because I said so. More and more, we know that students are not accepting those responses. They're following up with a series of whys. And so we've got to get better about helping them understand the connection between school and what they're learning and what they will face in life. I don't want to get in the weeds, but there's things we're doing related to that. If you think about our instructional model, one of the things nice about GRR, which is Gradual Release Responsibility Model, is as teachers approach their lesson planning, they start their lesson with something called establishing purpose. And so one of the things we're doing as a part of our professional learning communities with teachers is as we're creating our lesson plans, let's make sure that we have conversations around the purpose of the lesson. How does it fit in context with who you are and maybe who you want to be? Why does the world care about this particular unit of study or this topic? And so there's more to it than that. But bringing attention to teachers and to students that this lesson is meaningful and it does have context and it fits into your world or to your future is one of the things that we're doing related to that. So looking forward, there's a lot of different things we have to do. I've highlighted five things here. One of the things that we're proud of is figuring out ways that we can partner within our organization and reaching out to other parts of our organization and our community. And one of the things that we know about the LifeTrack data that you've heard before is our return rates are consistently low, right around 30%, depending on the year. And we believe that by creating our own survey, getting a baseline, and partnering with the CB alumni, Friends and Alumni Group, we believe we can get better response rates. And higher response rates are important because we're making decisions from school improvement plans on down the list with this data. So we want that data to be reliable and valid. And one of the ways to do that is to ensure higher rates of return. Because we know, just generally speaking, the 30% that are returning those surveys are either our greatest advocates or, more often than not, our greatest critics. And so we've got to figure out a way to get those return rates up. We believe we'll be able to beat that 30% moving forward. Also, you've heard a lot about Strategic Plan 5. We need to continue to roll those things out. We're getting some momentum there. And there's more to come related to that in the future. We know that students tell us that their teachers set high expectations. That's clear in the data. Whatever data point we look at, we hear from students that they do feel like, generally speaking, teachers are setting high expectations. We need to continue to do that. And we need to really reach out to our community members. That's why the Grow CB with the Menards, we need to continue to reach out to them and partner with them. We've got the 21st Century Grant, which I mentioned in the last point. We're going to partner with the Centennial Rotary. So again, these community connections as much as possible because we can help each other. Fourth point is, which I mentioned earlier, just continue to grow our AP High Standard C Courses. Today, we just heard from Iowa Western that two more C Courses were accepted with a partnership through our PLTW program. Really excited about that. So continuing to partner with Iowa Western and bridge those gaps, which goes to the last point with the Potomac Promise Program. We had a great breakfast. We're sending off a new cohort. But those partnerships between Council Bluffs Schools and Iowa Western and our community organizations continue to get stronger and stronger. And so, and then, of course, I mentioned the 21st Century Grant, which we're looking forward to because now we can fund some of these great ideas that we're hearing from teachers in the community. Questions?
Do board members have questions for Dr. Plort? Nice summary. Thank you.
I have one question, just, I guess, is there anything in here that was... Does anything come out of this that we were, I mean, I know it's been two years. Anything that was shocking to us or anything we were surprised by at all?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the data's been pretty consistent. Something that we'd like to do moving forward, and Dr. Vorthman and I talked about this today, is beginning to look at the data maybe in different ways. You know, how can we compare the 2009 to the 2010? Because we're starting to get five-year cohort data in. We hesitated to do that because really what we want to do, like I mentioned earlier, is we want to create a new baseline with our new survey, which has been created, which we're actually piloted. We piloted that with our Try Two grads. And we've now rolled that out to our Try Three grads from this year. And you'll get a presentation on that once we have that data and it's analyzed. And then we can, again, have that new data and that new baseline moving forward. So, but no, no surprises. A lot of times, you guys know, we triangulate data and we check this data against walkthroughs, school improvement plans, Iowa assessments, on and on. And it's been pretty consistent, what we're hearing. And you can see that, just the comparison between 2010 and 2013, you can see the data's pretty consistent.
Do we see any, is there any, do parents give us better, more positive feedback than students or vice versa? Or is it...
That's another challenge with this data is what we believe happens behind the scenes is students, some students report, but many times, if the student's off to college or they're not available, then we get parents reporting. So the data, in a sense, can be contaminated because the perception of a parent and a perception of a student could be, is likely different, or could be anyway. So again, finding ways to clean that data up has really been our challenge moving forward.
I guess one final, just on the...
Sure.
Have we seen anything different with, I think I've asked this before, about students who are in college, feeling prepared for college, students in the workforce, feeling prepared for workforce? Or does it break down that far?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it talks about workforce, but yeah, I would say no.
Okay.
You can't differentiate who answers the questions.
Well, we can. I mean, based on the demographics. But that's an area where we'll actually get better moving forward because we're going to work with Diane and the Communications Department on tapping into, you know, current social media and current phone numbers and current addresses and just get better about follow-up and getting more students involved in the follow-up.
Sounds good.
When are those surveys mailed?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When are the surveys mailed?
Okay.
Well, this year, they were late on the mailing. You probably remember typically this comes as a result of the 2015. But because they were mailed late, they are mailed, yes, Dr. Bruckner.
Because on here, it says mail returned undeliverable.
Yes. They do a follow-up call. LifeTrack does. They do a mailing and then they try to follow up with some phone calls.
Because one of the concerns that we had from a community member is getting a call and the return address says LifeTrack. And they all assumed that that was somebody trying to sell them something to put around their neck. And that's not true. So I know there are some calls, but...
Yes. And so that's one of the things we're hoping, you know, we can change. LifeTrack, nobody really, other than us, you know, people... LifeTrack, nobody really other than us, you know, people don't know who LifeTrack is. So, this idea of developing relationships with families and having them, that return rate higher will bode better for the reliability and the validity of the data.
And it's not something we can do while, right before they graduate?
We do, yes, we do, yes. So, this is the 18-month and the five-year follow-up. So, that's the challenge. A lot of times, a young person is off college or they've moved out of state. We don't have a forwarding address, LifeTrack doesn't. But we think, working with Diane in the Communications Department, we believe we can find some ways to again, reach out to those people more consistently.
Do those students retain their CB CSD email? It's gone once they graduate. Because I know when you graduate from some universities, you get to keep it for contact purposes.
Are we required to do this survey by the state or is this a voluntary?
This is up to us.
To collect information, yeah.
Other questions?
Very nice report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Plard.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a legislative summary presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, again.
We considered about just being silent, but.
We like to hear Diane's voice.
There you go. We'll make it interesting, how's that? It's nice to be able to present to you that, that the legislature has adjourned for the session on April 29th. I thought you might be interested in the four major topics of conversation and really just a small summary of each of them. The statewide one cent sales tax for school infrastructure, which has been a priority of this school district and this board for several years, there was no action taken, mostly because it was, it was combined with water quality as an issue and it just did not get resolved. We anticipate that will be discussed again next session. The state supplemental aid, as you know, was set at 2.25% and was not adequate, is not adequate and is not in line with what we had been lobbying for and encouraging our legislators to support. They did not address supplemental aid for 2018, which is disappointing because that is helpful as we plan our budgeting in the years to come. The statewide assessment was delayed until July of 2017, so no assessment selected, no change in assessment selected and no funding for a new assessment. Similarly, the third grade retention, the decision on that was delayed until 2017 again due to funding mostly, as I understand it. Sorry about this, but the call for legislative priorities will be due in August, so we'll be back this summer talking about how, what do we want to push forward as our ideas and our priority for the Iowa Association of School Boards and its legislative team. Bill, are you still on that? The legislative team at the state level?
No.
Okay. We'll carry it forward to your colleagues there and they can use input from this board as well as boards across the state to be able to set the, set the issues for next year to be tackled. What questions or what discussion do you want to have at this point? There was additional information from the Iowa Association of School Boards in your packet. We have not yet received the summaries from the Department of Education and the Urban Education Network. Those are all very helpful for us as an administration to look at, to make sure that we're in line with any changes and are aware of things that we need to do that are different based on legislation passed this session.
Questions for Diane? I might add that the Iowa Association of School Boards had a webinar last Friday, or Thursday, and I tuned in and watched that and it was an excellent presentation. They're doing these webinars over the noon hour, hoping to catch more people and they had about eight of our employees give a synopsis of the legislature. It's because you can go to the website for ISB and look it up. I'd encourage you all to look at it because I, I wrote down four things I didn't bring in the night that I did not know, so it was kind of interesting.
Dr. Bruckner, we could share that link in a future communication. I have that available.
But I'd say keep looking when you get those messages about webinars. They're going to keep doing that because they're getting some pretty good participation, so it doesn't cost anything since we're members, so sign up and look at them. Anything else? Okay, thank you Diane. Now, we're to the resolutions part of our meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution to set a date for public hearing to amend the 15-16 budget?
Motion to authorize and direct the secretary to give notice of a public hearing to amend the 2015-2016 budget to be held at the ESC offices, 300 West Broadway Suite, 1600 Council Bluffs, Iowa, at 6:30 PM on May 24th, 2016.
Thank you, Dr. Bruckner. Seconded by Mr. Arthur. Any other discussion? I call the roll, Mr. Wilson, please.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion carried. Next up is purchase agreement related to the athletic complex. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize Board President to sign the purchase agreements for purchase of the following property, tract of land being the property in Lot 307 and 308, Belmont in addition to the City Council of Bluffs, Potomone County, Iowa.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Riley, thank you. Any further discussion? Now, this concludes all the properties except the two businesses?
Correct.
That's good, that's been a long road, but we're getting there, right? Okay, any other comments, questions? Will you please call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
And we've, one more question, just verifying, we've managed to acquire all the properties without the use of eminent domain?
We have.
Good.
Good job.
Okay, will you call the roll now, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion carried. Next up, we have approval of exempt salary, salary package. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Directors approve the two-year total package increase of 2.95% for 2016, 2017, and 2.95% for 2017, 2018 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any board members have? I have a suggestion. I'd like to see us table this and the one for the administrators to the next meeting and ask Dr. Bruckner to see if they can come up with another package that's closer to our new money. I just think we need to start a trend that we can't keep giving more in salaries than we get. So, I can't make, amend the motion and I'm just giving my two cents worth here. So, it's up to you as fellow board members what to do with that.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
We did have that conversation with the groups that we worked with and the groups kind of justifiably point out if we have approved a salary package for teachers and we say that they are worth that much money, that we probably should not send a message to other employees that they are not. Now, I understand your suggestion very much. I wish that the legislature would give us more than 2.25% and I wish that, I might stop there, I wish they would do that. But in this case, we really, if we, if we've given this, this raise to teachers and to CWA and to SEIU, I think we probably owe it to these two groups, but it's the board decision.
My response to that would be, I'm assuming that we know we're going to have to probably pink slip some people next year to make the budget work?
We know, we know we're going to have to reduce the number of employees we have. Whether we do that through voluntary means, perhaps in an early retirement program or by not filling through attrition, we know we have to reduce the number of employees. We know we have to do that for this year and by the end of the hiring season, we will show you evidence that we're working on that, so.
I guess that'd be my response to why this group could take less money is if we'd say to them, you don't have to suffer any pink slips. I'm just trying to throw out some possibilities to get off dead center.
For the exempt, employees or for the administrators?
Both, if they both take a smaller percentage.
But I, I don't think we want to make a decision right now about whether or not we would pink slip any of those employees because we may have to do that. I mean, I, I don't want to make a promise without a very clear study that if you accept less money this year, we won't pink slip you because I don't think we're in a position right now to be able to say that. We're hoping that we won't have to. I, I just know, I can give you an example of an employee that we hired this year at the administrative level who would not have been making as much at the administrative level per diem as that person would have been making at the teaching level per diem. So, I don't know that I want to send a message to administrators that they are less important to us than teachers are. I, I don't want to send that because I see them work day in and day out and I understand you're not trying to say that. You're, you are certainly trying to instill a culture to where, where the legislature decides our raises instead of us and I don't know if we want to go there either, but I'm just speaking for myself. There are six other board members that are here. I'm not a board member.
Well, if nothing else, I just don't know why we need to do a two-year agreement with this group. What if the legislature gives us 4% new money next year?
We won't cut as many people.
Yeah, and then we could give this group more money because we've already said it with teachers.
Actually, actually, we probably wouldn't give them more money. If this is an agreement, this allows us to plan and if Mr. Wilson keeps telling us we're going to be cutting four or $5 million in the next two years, knowing what the percentage is in, for two years in a row will help us plan. If it came in at 6% next year, I never say never, but I'm not sure that we would increase this.
Well, not.
It would be up to our new HR director.
You wouldn't do that if you, if you pass this motion as it is, you wouldn't open it up again for two years.
No.
And I'm just saying, if a one-year agreement, this group might have a chance to get more money. I'm done.
Me too.
Any further discussion? Okay, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
No. Motion carried. Next one is for the administrators. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a two-year total package for district administrators reflecting an increase of 3% for 2016, 2017, and 2.9, 2.98% for 17, 18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
No.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
No. And the motion carries, five to two. Next is our policy review and approvals. We have final reading of these policies, compulsory attendance, open enrollment, student medication administration, parental authorization, authorization and release form for medication, authorization for asthma and airway constricting medication, student wellness, field trips, field trips and students' performance travel, student guidance and counseling program, purchasing bidding, campaigns or activities for fundraising. This will be second readings on all those. And then we have first readings of alternative means of classroom credit, instructional materials, selection and replacement, early graduation, student assessment plan and virtual online learning. Quite a few policies there. Any questions, concerns, and what's presented?
No motion.
Pardon? Oh, we haven't had a motion yet, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the final reading of the policies and procedures as presented by Mr. Grove.
Second.
Okay, any second, we got that?
I guess I did have a question, the, I realize it was just kind of the addendums it looks like or the attachments to the student medication administration, but that wasn't on the first reading, just curious, was that just forgotten? It was the?
No, those are administrative procedures. We always do that with the second reading. It's the final reading of the policies and it's the first and only reading of the administrative regulations.
But it was, we had it before, we had the student medication administration a month ago.
Right.
And then we had some attachments to it.
Right. 517 you read twice because that's a policy. 517.1 and 517.2 are corresponding administrative regulations that you approve at the second reading.
Okay, they just look like attachments, that's why I didn't know.
Okay. Is that clear, everybody?
I have one.
Questions?
I have one clarification. On 620.1, the field trips, student performance travel, one of the items is states, students, this is, I don't even know what page we are, students who have not participated sufficiently in fundraising, this is under fundraising for field trips. Students who have not participated sufficiently in fundraising activities or have not made a good faith effort to raise the funds or to cover the entire individual travel amount associated with the trip will not be able to participate in travel. I believe this is under the music performance. I just want to clarify, even if they do not want to participate in the fundraiser, if they get the money on their own and give the entire check, that they're still able to go because they've, they went and got their own money to support.
It is my understanding that that's true, yes.
Okay.
The policy is meant to say, if you need.
Group effort is better.
The group effort, we want you to help with it. If you don't need the group effort, then you are contributing by that, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification that if somebody wanted to pay their own way, that they weren't singled out because they didn't participate in the fundraiser.
Nope, that's okay.
Just to clarify, that's count, that's defined as fundraising.
Right.
Paying, paying their own way is defined as fundraising, so.
I know, I just wanted to clarify that if somebody wants to actually write a check, that it's okay.
If you want to write a big check, it's even better.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mrs. Riley, that's good.
And they can fundraise for others.
That's true.
Other questions, comments? We're dealing with the second reading of these policies now. Is that what this motion is about, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Second and first readings, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's clarify that. This is both under one thing, so are you right now just approving the final reading of the, of the first policies and corresponding administrative regulations?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we'll have two motions to get it done.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on that second reading? If not, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion carried. Lastly, we have approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of the district to enter into contracts for placement of student teachers for 2016-17, personnel action and claims and accounts. Is there a motion?
Move approval of our consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Arthur. Any discussion questions? Okay, please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.